Welcome to town to all the planning board meeting, March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, seven P M. Tonight, we have a public hearing on a major subdivision located between Route fifty-one and twenty-six. Alan, you want to come up and we'll go through, oh, you have the?
I have a map up.
Well, first thing we gotta do is-
You want me to talk about it a little bit?
Well, yeah, first I'm gonna go through all the green cards, make sure everybody's been notified.
I'm almost done, I got like three left.
Oh, oh, you, yeah, okay, well, you're ahead of us. That saves you some time.
I think I like this.
Yeah, I know. You get rolling, you don't need people.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we don't have all the green cards, but I'd say we have about half of them we're missing.
We have the what, white receipts that they sent?
We do, so all the white receipts we received, so they were all sent, and we got about, we're missing nine out of a list of...
You said seventeen?
Seven, seven, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, out of nineteen.
Yeah, they were just coming back though, like a big group just came back the other day to get back to Orietta, I think might be part of it with the postals.
Okay, well, the white slips are there, so.
Yeah.
We can move forward.
One was returned that couldn't be sent.
Who was that to?
Alan Allen, nine two four, County Route fifty-one. I'm not sure.
I had several phone calls, so I know they got them.
Yeah.
Put my phone number in there.
Yep, okay. Mail wasn't received until just past Thursday. You didn't receive it till just this past Thursday?
Oh, they were mailed two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Okay, well, for starters, this is Alan Lord, Alan of, come forward, he's got maps, and they, if you give us a brief-
A brief summary.
Of what we're doing here, and then we'll open up the questions and whatnot, just like let everybody know this meeting is recorded, streamed, so. Beware that. Pam?
Okay, great. The property's a ninety-one acre parcel, it fronts on County Route fifty-one, County Route twenty-six, County Route fifty-four. We propose to subdivide it into just ten lots, ranging from two point seven to twenty-eight acres, so they average about nine acres per lot. The town minimum is two acres, so we're way in excess, all the lots meet all the town zoning and requirements. We don't plan to build on the lots, or the owner doesn't plan to build, they'll be sold as vacant land. There is a New York State wetland down through it, I put it in green, so you can see it, I tried to use that as a property line, so lots wouldn't be crossing back and forth between the wetlands, I tried to use that as a line. It was flagged by North Country Ecological Services, there is a hundred foot buffer zone back to protect the wetlands. There's protective covenants that are placed on the land, one dwelling per parcel, no single-wide mobile homes, and no further subdivisions, so what's, the way it's laid out now is what it will be, somebody can't buy one of the lots and make three more out of them.
Alan, I'm gonna interrupt you a second, we have some copies of these covenants, how many copies you have here?
I just gave them to you guys, because I figured there might be questions.
Okay, all right, I thought you did.
I think Alan mailed them.
Everybody got a letter, I mailed them a copy of the covenants.
Oh, you, oh, they have the covenants.
With an eight and a half by eleven map, I know it's small, but I wanted at least an idea of what, what they were getting. So, that's, um, we, they plan to sell them as vacant land, well, and our build ratio is only about twenty-three percent in a ten-year period. So, you figure one out of four lots will have a house on it in a ten-year period. Everybody's dream is to own a piece of land, they don't always do anything with it. I, I live in one of the subdivisions, and I, they own, people own the land for fifteen years before they actually built, they retired from Staten Island and built their house, so. That's, um, that's all they have.
Okay.
You can open it up to.
Right. I'd like to open it up to the public, if you have questions or comments, could you come forward and state your name and your address? And one or two at a time, and if you want to look at the maps closer up, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Bert Bellmire, I live at ten ninety-four, County Route fifty-one.
Yep.
Lot six would actually be behind my property, as well as everyone else at the corner. Hear me, uh, my concern is, you know, stormwater runoff, you know, everyone there has septic, so all that is gonna go downhill into that lot. I'd like to see any ideas, how would you manage that?
You're, you're behind lot number six?
Yeah, we're, well, lot six is behind me.
Oh, okay, and they're below you, correct?
Yeah.
Grade-wise?
Yeah.
Okay. So you would be grading onto them, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Pretty much everybody from that corner, even over here, they would all drain down into that spot.
What is the size of lot six?
Six point five.
Yeah. It's a sizable lot. And I believe you, you do a map and show roughly where the septic's gonna be?
Yeah, they don't have to build there, I do have that in the-
And that's, that's something that, you know, as they buy the lots, they have to hire an engineer, they have to be engineered septicists.
And, and they're gonna have to do stormwater, but, um, as part of their design, but you're all above, it, it's gonna flow this way.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I mean, it's, our stuff is gonna contaminate their property.
Right.
So I'm like, you know, how, how does somebody feel about that?
How, what's the size of your lot?
I'm roughly about, just about two-thirds of acre.
Yeah.
Well, there, um, by health law, their well has to be two hundred feet downhill from, from your septic.
Yep.
System, but they got plenty of room to, to do it, actually, I designed the building site way down in this corner, this was the septic test that I did for-
Okay.
For that lot, so I didn't have anybody building up in.
Oh, yeah.
And, and it's limited to one house per lot, so.
Is there gonna be a big impact on other people's wells in the area?
I don't think so, I researched the wells, it appeared, it seems that everybody in that neighborhood has a fairly, the D E C records show that they, they yield a pretty good yield.
Okay.
Do you know how deep your well is?
Uh, it's very shallow, it's only about a hundred and thirty feet. And it's, and it's so shallow that my water has become salty this year.
Have you ever run out?
No.
Okay. Well, that, that, that's pretty good.
Yeah, I'm lucky there.
Yep, yep.
Uh, also, an impact on animals, I mean, that, that area is a huge sanctuary for a lot of animals, you got deer, bear, you name it, it's in there. Just wonder if there's any impact on that, or where do they expect those animals to move to?
My, my property. Probably gonna go eat pork these quarter.
Yeah, oh yeah, yep, the bears come and eat it and come and deposit my yard.
Well, not for nothing, I do a lot of work in Sleepy Hollow, and everybody's DM'd it, and there's so much wildlife in there, my God, it's wild, so they, they don't go away.
I think that's about it for me.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Answer all your questions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I've got some questions.
Okay.
Nick, that was Sandy Paradise Hill Road. My property line is right here, and it basically goes all the way over to twenty-six, there's a hundred and fifty-two acres there. My concern is two lots, number one, and I guess it's number nine over here, for the leaching fields for the septic coming into the property. It doesn't show on the map, unless I'm misreading it, where the houses are gonna go. Well, it sounds like in the letter that you sent, that the grantees or the owners of the property will make that decision. Unless we can do a, a separate covenants for that. I mean, I'd like to know where the wells are gonna be, where the septic tanks are gonna be, because I don't want it leaching into, into my property. That's my concern. I'm not against any kind of development, believe me, I don't think it's a bad thing, but I just don't know where the houses are gonna be, and the wells are gonna be, and the septic's are gonna be.
How big are those parcels that border?
They're the two biggest, they're the two biggest lots, this one's twenty-five acres, and this one's fifteen acres. And just for, everything flows away from your property, this creek is flowing this way. So, topal-wise and everything, nothing should flow onto your property, but I wouldn't imagine anybody building close to your property line. This, this is where I did the septic system, it's over, it's over six hundred and fifty feet from your property line. This one's way down here, always.
Is that where the house is gonna go over here?
Well, again, they can build wherever they want, we're not building a house, they, they can decide, they can decide where they want to build it, we're just selling vacant land.
See, that's one of my concerns, where they decide to build a house. There's no, there's no designation on the map for any of the parcels where the houses are gonna go. It does have some sites for the septic, but that doesn't mean the house is gonna be in that specific spot. So, something for you to talk about, like I said, the, everything has been passed on to the grantees of the property, which is, which will be the property owner. And they can decide where they want to put the house, and you can do a separate covenants to specifically spot where the house is going to go, the construction is gonna go, but that's, that's up to you. Those are my concerns.
Well, you did the perk test, that's closest to the road area?
Yeah, I did, I did where, where we could get to easily with an excavator.
Okay.
So you're, Nick, follow up on that, so you're thinking the maps, I mean, should show where the house is gonna go, or?
Well, everybody has a deed to their property, and on your property, you have the spot where your house is. If you do a separate covenants for the parcels, specifically where the house is gonna go, that, that can be put on to the deed for each parcel. And you would know where the house is gonna be, the well's gonna be, and the septic's gonna be. I don't know what the rule is on septic, if it's still three hundred feet or not, or the leaching field.
Well, there's a, there's a minimum to the property line, there's a minimum to anybody's well, including any on your property. But as far as, uh, somebody buying a parcel that says, okay, the house says it'd be right here, I don't know, it's, it might be, it'd be tough to do, you know, it's-
And they still have to come in with a site plan, get it approved, and has to go by all the laws that you go by when you build on your property.
Well, that, that stream that we were talking about over there, I, that actually comes down through my property, and I have a fire pond next to the old Hesse's house. And up by Odell's house on fifty-one, I have another probably two-acre pond up there, and that does, that does connect those two, two ponds, that particular stream.
Yeah, but it flows downhill from you.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Correct.
Well, I believe all the wetlands are protected on this, you know?
It seems that way, and I agree with that.
Hey, um, okay, please come up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, my name is Dave Fall, I live at ten eighty-two, County Route fifty-one, and I'm over in Trent. My, my property is backing on to this parcel here, so I just had two concerns. One is that this area here on the hill that we live on drains through a culvert, right, roughly right in here, and I don't see it on this map. And my, my wife has some pictures, we took it this morning, there's, can be, especially when it's raining, a lot of water going through that culvert. And I'm worried about what that would mean for these properties right in here, because they might need to have the same kind of, at certain times of the year, same kind, you know, take precautions to get the drainage in. And then my other concern, my family is asking, well, how come you didn't offer to buy this land right behind us here? And that would be something I'd like to discuss with Land and Lakes if that were feasible, I don't know what your business arrangements are. Those are my two points, thank you.
Okay, hang on just one second, let's back up to the drainage, because it's always a concern. Is, is that seasonal, or is that a continuous flow?
It's, it's, it can, it's stronger in the spring.
Yeah.
And it's, but it is drier in, in the summer, but there's always mud there, where the, when the water seeps through the culvert, even in the summer.
Which lot is that drainage going to?
Oh.
Did you tell them?
The culvert's on the map.
Yeah.
Just so you can see up here.
Yeah. I mean, it's still, it's just, the lot, I believe, is big enough so that people can- near your house around two blocks.
Absolutely, I put it roughly on the property line. Also, here's the culvert.
Point out, it is covered by one of the covenants.
See where it comes down through, there's a, there is a, it's a intermittent stream.
It's right here. It's beyond, right beyond Royal Irwin's house.
Yes.
So it's, um-
So it's basically a vacant lot.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Which acre is it?
Seven point two eight.
Okay, well, that's the nice thing about a larger acreage, they can, you know, position their house in a separate center.
Anyway, there's-
There's also water up there.
Yeah. And, and it's also in the covenant that, you know, it shouldn't, it can't be blocked, you know, that you're concerned about backing up.
I'm just, well, mainly, I'm just concerned about somebody getting washed out in a rainy spring.
Yeah.
I've been there where the water comes cascading through, uh, under, under the road, and then shoots down that, and then, then waterfalls over the little hills, it's right along here. Literally, it's a waterfall.
Is this the, the property that you were implying about purchase?
No, uh, that was here, ma'am.
Lots, it wasn't purchased.
This, this chunk in here, that, from here over to here. David, do you mind writing your phone number down?
Sure, we'd have to.
Yeah. We've got seven acres, so you get, do have room flexibility, you know, so. This is a seven-acre lot, it makes its way down, nobody's sleeping too well. Well, it says, definitely block, right?
Right.
Yeah. Well, it's seven acres, we got a lot of flexibility, so. Thank you, appreciate it. Someone else?
My name is Joe Bucci, I'm at nine forty-nine, County Route fifty-one.
Yeah.
And so I'm across the street.
Okay.
From the Niffens. Now, just, in, in continuing the conversation that was just mentioned here, if there are issues with runoffs and things like that, you know, and you do have additional people, you, you have people come in and they buy the property. I mean, isn't it conceivable that they would try to, if they, if, when they discover that, they would then defer, try to divert that kind of runoff? And then possibly would impact upon somebody else by diverting it?
Um, I'm sure if they got water running down through their lot, they're more likely going to swale it or contain it, but they, according to covenants, they can't block it, so that can affect anybody upstream where you are.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I only wanted to continue that, that thought process, only because of the unknown as to, you know, what would happen down the road, you know, when things are, are discovered, and, and, you know, you know, they try to overcome those issues and divert it, and, you know, again, I'm not familiar with the laws of, you know, what they can and cannot do to divert that, but, you know, there, there's certainly gonna be a lot of things that would come up, you know, as, as these things are discovered, in particular by people that are, have, have not, you know, yet purchased the property, and they're just looking at a little piece of land, that, you know, they, you know, they're not sure what they're gonna do with.
Well, lot three goes, if water's diverted down, downhill, it'd be going into a twenty, what's that, my, twenty-eight acre lot?
Well, there, yeah, but it would get to the wetland area.
Yeah.
Yeah. The, the, the one good thing is it's a seven-acre lot, so you've got some flexibility, I mean, it's seven acres, you know, you root the water a little bit in, still put your house, that's good.
And, and in, in continuing the conversation that was mentioned by this other gentleman, with some, making some kind of a stipulation as, as to where the house would be built. Is that something that could be looked into, you know, within a proximity of the leach field or the, or the existing septic?
Oh. Well, it has not, it's not in our codes or any requirements for subdivisions.
We, we've, we've never had to do that, because it, like, like everybody said, it's not in our, in our codes, it's not our job to do that.
It's not a prerequisite to approve a subdivision. They have actually done over and above what most people do with a subdivision, with the protective covenants.
Did you get a copy of these covenants?
Uh, well, I got a copy of the letter, yes.
Okay, great.
Yeah, that's just it, I mean, I'm, I'm pretty much here to learn what's, you know, because, you know, I don't, you know, fully understand, you know, how this is all gonna play out.
I, I don't see how we can dictate where, exactly where the house lies, I mean, people do buy property, they'd like to have-
Oh, of course.
Certain amount of, I mean, I, I know personally, if I was buying property, I would want to have some flexibility.
Of course.
But I think Alan took the time to lay out where he thought the septic should be, and he has a, a map of that, if you'd like to see that.
Uh, yeah, if it wasn't included in the package, I would certainly like to see it.
We can, we can take a minute.
Alan, we have one right here, is this the right one?
Yeah.
I'll take a look.
See on each parcel?
Yeah.
They don't have to build like that, though.
Yeah.
It's just to show that they can-
That there's enough space.
Okay. To some degree, an engineer doing the septic is going to dictate that, and a lot of people, what they do is they figure out where they can put their septic, and then they decide, that, that dictates where the well's gonna go, so they have the clearance, and then they kind of have to work to that with their house, to some degree. You know, that's based on the perk of the ground, number one, and, and the terrain also, you know, so.
And actually, they have head start, because you've already done the perk tests.
Correct, we've done soil tests, but some people like to build a little farther off the road, some people like to build close to the road, so that's why we try not to, um-
Pinpoint.
Right. Okay, yeah, those are the only questions I have. Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
It's some general questions, John Succi, ninety-seven, seven, County Route fifty-one. These are all like agricultural areas, and it says here they can buy it as agricultural, so what defines that? So, is solar farm, is that agricultural, so we could put a farm here, and like, it's gonna change the dynamics of the area, it's gonna like wipe out all the land, all the forest, and then all the deer end up, you know, running down the road?
Solar projects are totally different.
They're not agricultural.
No.
Don't take the word farm, all right, that way.
Just making sure, if they start putting up chain link fences, it's gonna screw up the dynamics of wildlife going through there, or chain link fences in general, so if you buy the land, fence it off, you know, like what's stopping someone from doing that? You know, can we add something?
Well, they would have to go through site, I mean, these parcels are not really big enough for a solar project that they would think would be cost-effective. These lots, the subdivision, lots go from what, two?
Right, and, and we don't allow commercial use anyways.
And I believe it's in the covenants, would that cover that, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
For single-family homes, and the covenants that says that the premises conveyed shall only be used for single-family homes, so that would, agricultural or non-commercial recreation use, except in home offices. So what that says is that they can't put solar there.
All right, let's take a look at agricultural, cannabis, someone wants to put in like a big cannabis farm, like right here, they come down off the road, I have two small kids, but that changes where you have a bunch of people coming in, harvesting, that type of material, drawing people, do that?
Well, they would have to go through the site process and come before-
And that's commercial.
And that would be commercial, too.
It's not commercial.
It's agriculture.
It's agriculture.
I don't know. It's undefined in our town.
Yeah.
But the, the covenant says it has to be.
I don't know.
Yeah.
It says no other commercial and industrial use of property is allowed, non-commercial, I don't, I don't think England would build a, a real profitable cannabis operation on these hillsides.
Well, it's all wooded, they'd have to clear, number one, I, I don't see somebody-
I mean, the property does not constitute to that.
I think that's a pretty far-fetched.
Yeah.
But your zoning would come into play there. Um, the town of New, New Baltimore has zoning, and, um-
I just want to make sure that I'm looking at everything now, before like something happens after the fact, like, oh, we never talked about it then, it's like, well, we talk about it now and say, yeah, it's a good idea, let's put that in there now, then we're not asking questions later on.
We have a possible cannabis operation in front of us, well, somewhat in front of us now, you know?
Yeah, not there, though.
Yeah.
I know the land's not great for growing stuff, you know, I, to that, but it's one of those things, I just want to make sure people can develop land, they could take, and bring soil in, they can do different things if they want to. So, so I just want to, you know, mention that things can be developed quickly if people want to.
It probably don't stop them from getting a hundred chickens, you know?
Yeah.
You know, seriously, you know?
Yeah, because it's agriculture.
So, I-
So I guess the cannabis, we, we don't think is gonna happen there, that's what we're saying, and it would have to come to the board for approval.
Well, it has so far, I mean, it's come.
Yeah.
We haven't pursued it yet, so.
Because there's a lot of questions surrounding it.
Yes. Hey, did you have a question, or anybody else?
But thank you for bringing those issues to our attention.
Um, no one else?
Rob, I have a question for the village of Midland. Um, these Brent House, the Fall House, Irwin's House, my, my fear is this place, this lot, number six, like, there're wells and there're septic, how, like, is that lot six gonna pull, drain water from you guys?
Well, lot six is downstream from them.
Yeah.
Right, they're uphill, I understand that, but the water comes from the ground, so are there wells gonna drain, because there's places in Medway, you got, um, on the corner of Old Kings Road and, and twenty-six, they, they don't have water. And then the house across the street, they had problems too, and that messes up.
Why don't they have water?
Um, oh my God, Ronnie, Kent, he had to draw water in from his brothers down across from the firehouse, I'm just worried about, about those folks on the corner. Daley's old house, the firehouse, Irwin's house, they've been there forever, and I just, I'm trying to understand, you know, what's gonna, I'm afraid that their water might be drained, and I'm just wondering how that works. Yeah, yeah, you see what I'm saying on that, because we're all draw, drawing wells, it's not like we've got something going through there, so I was just wondering, if that's below them, is that gonna draw on their water source, those guys?
Well, the, the well, the depth of the well's gonna determine that, whether it's below them or not, they, they might have a shallower well than the hundred and thirty-foot well he had said he had.
Right.
So then he, then he would be below them, in that respect.
Right, but would, would it draw, draw from them, those guys up there?
I mean, how, how do you, how do you, how do you know what an, where the aquifer is, you know?
Okay, yeah, all right, that was my only-
Yeah, um, anytime, anytime-
Yeah, um, anytime, anytime anybody drills another well anywhere, it's a day, probably.
Right.
My, my thought on that is it's a house, it's not drawing so much water on a daily basis that it's gonna probably take away from somebody else several hundred yards away.
Just for instance, they have, just on that side of fifty-one, and I know there's some on the other, but there's five houses in less than our six acre lot where we're gonna put one house. So, there's already five wells up there in a smaller area than, um, so I don't think us drilling one more well is gonna impact.
Health department usually figures two hundred to two hundred and fifty, and I think that's high gallons per day in the house. That, and I think that's high, but, uh, so that's, it's not like it's huge, huge draw, I don't think.
But I can bring you the well records if you want, I looked them up on D E C, quite a few of them up there around the intersection, and they're all eight, ten gallons, fifteen gallons a minute. There's, I was surprised at how many showed up on the D E C, but.
That was my own.
Well, thanks for bringing that point up, you know?
You, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
You just hear the complaints and we just wanna make sure everything is good for those guys, too.
Okay, anything further?
Just, um, for the development company, do most of your lots stay just as they are, or do people usually build on them?
Um, like I said, I, I did a study for that ad around that park, they wanted to know what our build ratio was, and, um, we had a twenty-three percent build ratio over ten year period.
Okay.
So, um, that's why I said, like, one in four, i- if you figure twenty-five percent in, in a ten year period, so out of the ten lots, if you have two or three houses over ten years, um, that's our, that's what our, I went back over a ton of our projects for the A P A to, um, get them, come up with that statistic.
Land and Lakes has done two development, two subdivisions before this one, in the town of Baltimore. Um, I can't remember what the, what was the size of the lot, or amount of lots?
Well, how many years ago was your first one? About four or five years ago?
That was in twenty fifteen, almost, well, ten years ago.
Ten years ago, uh, has anyone built on any of those lots?
One house.
One house, and, uh, maybe sixteen, was there?
Sixteen parcels.
Parcels.
There's one new house in ten years.
And then last year, you did another ma- major subdivision, and no one's built yet. No one's even cleared any land yet.
Right.
Other than Central Hudson.
Made a mess.
Yes, they did.
So where is that area in general?
The, the other subdivisions?
What are you talking about now, when you did this?
Yes, they, one was up Route fifty-one, uh.
Close from Shady Lane.
Yeah.
To Sodom Road. There's, uh, what, ten parcels in there you did, I think?
Yes.
And then it continues, actually, um, down fifty-one, Sodom Road, to Old Kings Road, was the other sixteen. So, it is a wood house belt. They're all sold, but.
Right, it probably won't change much, you're probably not gonna see a big change.
If I recall, you sold mainly to the neighbors.
Yeah.
Yeah, on the one.
Most of the first one all sold to the neighbors, so.
Yeah, a lot of neighbors all bought. And everybody that got a letter for this will get a letter before they go on the market. So we offer them to all the neighbors before we put them out to sale.
Okay, um, anything further? Okay, please, come forward again.
Just one quick question, the barn is, I think is, uh, across Route twenty-six.
Yeah.
And, uh, do you have any special plans for that barn? You gonna demolish it or?
No, we're gonna, it's gonna stand, we're gonna sell it, hopefully somebody will do something nice with it.
Seems like it's still a fairly straight barn, huh?
It is, it's, it's a pretty solid barn, it's got a slate roof up there.
Yeah, it'd be a shame to see it go. Okay, um, well, there's nothing further. Any final questions there, closed public hearing?
Okay, closed public hearing for the Clive Haven subdivision.
Can I say something?
Sure, go ahead.
On the corner of fifty-one and twenty-six, there used to be a pizza shop there.
Yeah.
This may be funny, but still, that means that there, is there allowances for businesses in that area with this?
Not on these properties, it says no commercial. Residence.
If it wasn't in the. No, it wasn't.
It wasn't illegal.
I went there for years.
Yeah, if, you know, you, if you want.
It was a store and everything, it was totally legal.
Yeah.
But thi- this is, this is, these are deed restrictions, so the, these can't be changed by the planning board or anybody. This is, this is it, you know? So it can't be subdivided absolutely at all. Can't have commercial things on it, I mean, that's, when the people buy that property, this is what they're getting. That's the conditions, you know?
And you have a copy of that?
We do.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, um, with a motion.
Okay.
A motion to close the public hearing for New York Land and Lakes major subdivision.
Second, okay, second, Mr. Frank, well, fair, motion carries. Okay, well, thank you, everyone, for your comments, and, uh, you're, but appreciate it. Um, at this point, we're gonna start our regular, um, planning board meeting. If someone wants to leave before we do that, feel free to do. Okay, but everyone, please rise, please. Okay, um. Let's do a few of these. Yeah, hey, Dan, wanna come up here a second? Dan's, uh, looking to, uh, we, I think we had discussion, brief discussion about the last meeting, about, uh, he lives on Dean'sville Road there, he wanted to do, well, there's the garage there already. It's literally been over, right, he always fixes equipment in there.
Oh, yeah.
So he wants to sort of drive, it's close to the road, and it sits back.
Uh, it's a blue house, big horseshoe driveway, kinda on the right hand side.
Concrete block garage?
Yeah.
Yeah, um. Um, so, we, we're discussing before the meeting, um, he doesn't have paperwork done cause that property's in his girlfriend's name, and she, her fiancee, she'll be coming home.
She comes home today.
Yeah. Very, um, I believe we looked at, uh, zoning last time, and, uh, it's, we need a site plan and use permit?
Both, special use permit and the site plan.
Yeah, okay. So, you'll have to get that all in her name, and, uh, get that done, and come back to us, and then we'll move forward, but, so.
If he's gonna be the one representing, should we have an authorization plan?
Mm-hmm. Either have her come, or, 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 would she come to the meeting? Okay. Good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Excuse me, um, you familiar with this site plan?
Uh, not really at all, to be honest with you.
If you, if you look at the online regulations, you can, you can get the parameters, what has to be included in the site plan.
Okay.
Okay?
Do, do we have a list? I think we have a sheet that has a list of them on.
Yeah, I, it might have been included in what I sent over, but if it wasn't, I will make sure I send it over tomorrow. No problem.
Thank you, thanks.
What, Holly? You gotta, something you're doing, okay, okay. You, you've been up here for a mic, I know you said this one before.
No, I was like.
How we doing?
And, and just so everybody knows, they definitely have all their ducks in a row, they have their mats, and they already have their deeds.
As we came. Um, let's see, all right, so first things first, um, this is the agent authorization form, okay, you want me to handle this? So, um, just.
Yep.
Oh, for one. Um, just cause we're speaking on behalf of the gentleman owns this parcel right here, um, it's a cousin.
Oh, okay.
So, um, so who's that?
So, um, the name, you don't have one on your map?
Yeah, it's already on file with you guys.
No, I just, we want, so I can hand it down.
Oh, no, you, uh, there you go.
You didn't, you can't have the one my while you didn't have your copies?
Uh, not on file. You guys can rotate to this one too if you feel the need.
And we just, you know, kinda like to add all, you know?
Sure, sure, go ahead. What's the point of the movement?
Uh, just to, um, make sure, make it more efficient so we can, uh, build there at a later date, um, for subdivision.
We're gonna adjust the lot lines right here, and then we're gonna subdivide right here, and then we're gonna build right there. We'll be a little bit lower.
So when this came through the emails.
But you're only doing this now.
I'm looking at Old Kings Road, I'm familiar with Old Kings Road, cause it's right next to my house.
Yeah.
You know, near my house.
You're, you're, you're on Kings.
There's three Kings Roads in New Baltimore.
Well, this is.
So there's Old Kings Road, there's Kings Road, and then there's the one at Cooksack.
That's Kings Road.
One Kings Road in Baltimore.
Yes, and your, your deeds say Old Kings, your map says Old Kings, it should just say Kings.
Oh, yeah, we'll have him.
Who messed that up in the nineties?
Probably that professional guy on the bottom there.
Yeah.
Wow. There's, there's a. Oh, it says Old Kings in there?
You've been living in the wrong.
Yeah, that's what the deeds, it's always been that, cause we've been there thirty-one years, thirty-two years this year.
Yeah.
So, and that parcel was my mother, my mother-in-law owned all of this. We subdivided our parcel in ninety-two, 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 so we got married in ninety-three.
So you've already had the deeds done?
No.
Okay, okay, well, I guess our point is, as long as we're redoing things.
Do it right.
Right, right. Put Kings Road on, you know?
Yeah, I didn't even notice that, like, how did that even, that must be what's on the site in here somewhere. Cause it's never been Old Kings Road since I lived there, ever, and I've been there thirty-two years.
Biggie Bobby was looking it up on Old Kings Road way out where.
Well, I was looking for the north thing, and it's all north, south. That's where the Kings Road goes, north, south, this is east, west.
This is my nephew's parcel right here, this is ours, we sold this to him when my mother-in-law died.
All right, we're just trying to get to what, there's two lots, right?
This is shifting this one, so you have a zero.
Size, swapping land.
It's the same size.
Two point, what is our lot, two point three four, two point one three?
Says it right on there.
This is.
This one.
But the town documents are just specific enough based off of their property line, and we wanna be up here in this area of the hill, um, that simply, there's more to build on that hill.
Okay, this is the line.
That would be in that extra, extra area, that's extra space to make sure we were able to get that, uh.
So what do you get, subdivided there?
Yup, that's the next one.
Well, that.
You have a. Yeah, yup, everything, whether we see, starting the surveyor, it's like a quality.
So we just wanna make sure that they're hired, they just wanna be hired.
Well, we don't have.
No, this, um, we, we feel like we're gonna be doing this.
It's not, it's like.
Well, seeing how this guy's evolves, it probably is better to do it like that, the lot line adjustment, you know? That he's got a clean lot, lots.
Yeah, which is why we're doing this step first.
He didn't wanna confuse you guys.
Yeah.
That's exactly right, cause I was annoying, I was just doing it all the time, he's like, no.
Why'd I bring you up here, man? How's the terrain here, are you gonna be able to get your stuff to yourself?
Um, very similar to theirs, honestly. A little bit of a rocky out front, but I mean, very similar to yours.
April, you're just gonna have to do this as a discussion within the minutes.
I will, I'll, I'll figure it out.
Because it's, you know.
This one, this one.
No, no, and I know what you're saying, so I have a suggestion.
Verbatim.
These aren't actually what it's about.
What, what's the amount conveyed, less than two acres?
The amount we're gonna ask.
The land switches.
Can we go back to one conversation here?
Okay.
Yeah, they're asking us questions, what was the question?
What's everybody's thoughts on this, uh, we'll, we'll see.
Heck, I'm sorry, do you?
I just don't understand it yet, cause I was trying to look it up, so.
Okay.
I'll let you guys figure it out.
So, why don't you explain to the whole?
I'd like one person to explain what's going on, I heard subdivision, and that's where I lost it. Is there a subdivision, or is a lot line now, and then you're coming back for subdivision?
Correct.
That's where I got lost.
Yeah.
Okay. This map is confusing to me, what do you got over there?
Um, this just shows. It just shows without the sub, without the, the total subdivision.
They're here for a lot line.
That's one.
Just wanna see what we're doing.
This is current, right here.
Gotcha.
All the way down. So this one's the current line.
This is coming down, yeah.
These are gonna gain this piece, they're gonna gain this piece.
Got it, thank you.
Uh, it'll come, the application's in your pocket if you wanna look through it.
Do we wanna, do we wanna run through it yet or?
Well, when we go through the application, make sure things, okay? You have the, um.
What I'm thinking is we just go through this application, and if everything's good, um, then it's just a matter of you getting your deeds, your maps changed, still right in the road.
Hey, guys.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna run through this, uh, let's just look through the application quickly, sure, so. You wanna keep this widget or?
Yeah, I'll take that, and I'll take the other map back too, that's what I have.
Do we verify what time here, what time here?
Oh, yeah, okay, do we have map back, please? We just wanna check, check the acres.
Absolutely.
Yeah, good idea about it.
When everything goes to, it'll go, I'm gonna need at least.
Okay, so for one, we have a four point four five five. Four point four five five, and a two one nine five, two point one nine five.
Yup.
Okay, so they're good.
That's the new acreage or the current acreage?
Well, it's current and new.
You do realize that your neighbor's got to change his deeds to hand mats?
Yeah.
Cause that's, we, I don't know why we seem to keep having that problem, that people don't get the fact you gotta change both deeds and both mats.
And they have to be presented for review by our.
Then they have to go to our town attorney.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So your deed is, the deed is affected, and then.
I don't see anything wrong with the application, is there anyone else?
Your husband.
No, it's just.
So both property deeds are.
Okay, I'll go through this part too quick.
You said they don't match, match the tax map?
This, this tax map, that one's is five point oh nine acres, the tax map for this one. So that's two point one six. I know it's very.
That's an actual survey.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, is that we're going, we have to go by that, that's it.
And this might not have the, this complete parcel in there.
Well, the tax map's been issued in the past.
Sure, but is that, that's actual survey?
Cause well, stamped by a surveyor, so.
Yeah, this is a mine.
I hope he's got it.
He said he was having problems finding certain things when he, uh.
He said he was having problems finding certain things when he was doing it, so.
Does it think that's wrong?
Yeah, the record's a pin, I guess.
A short evaluation form.
Hopefully your taxes will go down because you got less property now.
My nephew wants more, so I'm gonna have to give it to him.
Yeah, they don't have the name.
What?
Is that what you, up here, it says shifting a boundary line's project sponsor. Shouldn't have, uh. The name.
Well, he's had the first part of it.
He does.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's trying to be filled out. Shouldn't they have their names up on top here?
Yeah, they should. I would put them in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh.
All right, so we're now looking at the short environmental assessment form. Um, part one, project sponsor information. Needs to be filled out.
Which names do you want? That's the, you almost need an instruction book for that. It's not user-friendly.
How much what you got on your survey map?
Here's the original copy.
Okay, so whose name do you want on it? Someone puts Jeffrey Coburn slash Michael and Holly.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
They're presenting it.
So do you want, we'll put both names?
It isn't gonna hurt. It isn't gonna hurt. Well, you go down below that, you also got name of applicant, sponsor, phone numbers, emails, addresses, all that, that pulled out.
Yeah, you see that? Yeah, just keep on going down through how when you're doing that out. Let me run through part two here.
On the first page, yeah, you want all three? That's good. We have a chance.
Well, we're gonna go on, get this part two done. Hey, will proposed action create a material conflict or an adopted land use or planning, is anything changed in regulation, I'm sorry?
No.
No, that's a no. Will proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
No.
Proposed action compare the characteristic quality of the existing community? Proposed action have an impact on the, on the environmental characteristics that could cause the establishment of a CEA? Will proposed action result in adverse change in existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure or risk transit by gear walkway?
No.
Proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and fail to incorporate recently available energy cost basis or renewable energy opportunities? Proposed action impact twisting, uh, waterways or water supplies, wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
No. Proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
Proposed action result in adverse change in natural resources? Um, will proposed action result in decrease in the potential for erosion flooding or drainage possibilities?
No.
Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
Well, please hear a vote to give this a negative declaration.
One motion?
Or a motion, I'm sorry.
A motion to, uh, for a negative declaration on part two of the environmental assessment for the Jeffrey Cobb, Michael and Holly marriages. Lot line bound, boundary line adjustment.
Very second, second, full favor.
Aye.
So it's a negative declaration.
Okay, uh, page two of the CAF.
Yeah.
Number five on top. Is proposed action to permit the use under zoning regulations should be marked yes.
Yeah.
Consistent with adopted company, it's a plan, yes. And below that, action, uh, character, existing building or nature, yes. The top three should be marked yes.
Yes, yes. Can you just put your initials for those changes?
Sure, it will.
Yes.
And then what was the third one? Seven?
Six.
First, three, right, is this a proposed action? Oh, and this, and it should be yes?
Five, six. Five may be yes, and six yes.
Okay. I think they're signing off right now.
Yeah.
So it should be okay.
And you put your initial.
Yeah, that's all right, yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then I'll just take the part two and add it to this one.
Yup, yeah, give us.
Yeah, I'll just give you this whole thing, you can.
Okay, all decent together.
It's signed EAF.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
You, you guys should be all set, you know, just, uh, so you gotta choose. Um, getting some maps changed on the neighbor's parcel also, and then we'll present it to the town attorney. And, uh, and it should be up, would you say it most?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, Alan, we're not gonna act on anything today to your project.
Right, no, my only question, did, did we do seeker, did we finish seeker, we went through?
We didn't sign it off, I don't think.
What?
We were waiting to see, uh, upon our, um, engineer's suggestion, wait till after planning board, she said.
Right.
I'm in a public hearing.
Right, so I didn't know, that's the only thing that, my map isn't ready for you to approve yet, you know, because it's in preliminary, they didn't. The surveyor didn't do all the bearings and distances and stuff on every lot line. You gotta get the final map put together for you, but I didn't know whether you were gonna do seeker tonight.
I know, I wasn't gonna, no.
Okay, that's all, that's the only, my only question.
Did you see the D E C response?
Yeah, there's nothing.
No children to play on the land. That's what they said, so. I didn't catch that one.
They don't, um, that hundred-foot buffer zone?
Yeah.
It can't be yard, it can't be grass, no children can play on that property.
They'll get fallen swamp.
There's no swamp there, right? It was, it was a reach.
Not like Disneyland, there are gators in there.
You think?
I think.
Then they got that general term that fifty percent of the lot can't be, well, like, well, what if you have a fifty-acre lot, you know?
Yeah, I, I know, and.
How do you make a general statement like that?
Government.
Right, there's no record, you know what?
Yeah, it's ludicrous.
Okay, good, well, um, I'll have the final, I'll have the final maps in for you.
Okay.
For next month.
Well, we, we gotta have some discussion about a few things.
Is there any, is there anything else that you need from me?
Nothing I can figure out, you know, I mean, it was nice that you did that septic two map, you know?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's not actually stone, still.
Right, it shows what's possible.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
All right.
Very good, thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, next, the Kiva project. You guys awake over there? Okay, sorry about that. Home seven thirty, it's your tone, eight thirty. You wanna? Is someone here with no one?
Yup.
Okay, all right, okay. But I'll come forward and we'll.
Do you want me to put the drawings up again? I guess I might easily.
I don't think we need, I don't think we need the drawings.
Probably, probably don't need it.
Yeah, yeah. Save them for a public hearing, you know.
Uh, I'm Kevin from Barker with No One Engineering, Rich was here last month.
Yeah.
Couldn't make it tonight, so we are in place.
Yeah.
We, uh, we're still getting to the last of the comments. Uh, we don't have everything completed yet, but we certainly will by next month for the, I, it's my understanding that there's gonna be, you're planning for the public hearing next month?
That's what our, our goal was.
Okay.
Skip, you guys, you skip?
Yes.
Okay, that's what, come up, come up here.
Finish.
Okay.
Marks first.
All right.
Um, so I guess I would say at this point, we should probably just review any open comments and see what we still need to get comments on or responses on and how close we are to see more closing things out.
Yes.
Okay. Um, if you wanna go through, do you have the, your review number three?
Yes.
Okay, um, I think there's only a few on here that we haven't provided responses on yet. So if you go to D engineer's report on water.
So. Did you, did you do a well test?
We haven't yet, that's what's in the process. It's scheduled, but it hasn't been done yet.
Who, who's doing it, Clavrec?
Uh, I'm not sure who's perfo, oh, okay. Um, and it's been set up with the owner, uh, so that's, that's all in place, it just hasn't been completed yet, but that's in the process. Okay, so that, that should answer that for now.
Um, you think you'll have that completed by the public hearing?
Uh, I'll check in with our engineer.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, but, uh, we'll, we'll confirm.
Kind of whether that be a question comes up, you know?
Right.
Just have someone with an answer. April, did we ever get back to DOT?
Nothing, so.
And you contacted Green?
Yeah, I sent to DOT and then I sent to, um, on, I believe, earlier it was February eighteenth or thirteenth, I sent it over to Green County Plan, or not Plan.
Initially.
Green County Highway Department.
Initially it went to Albany and we heard nothing, so we made a point to send it to Green County.
Yeah, and I, and I actually.
Back yet either from.
I actually talked to Scott, the superintendent at Green County.
Oh, you did?
And he says he has received the package and reviewed it, but as far as any curb cuts on that U S Route nine W is DOT jurisdiction.
It is DOT, so that'll probably come back with no.
So it's gotta come out of Albany to, is that what you're saying?
It's gotta go to the state, um, if that's where their offices are.
Initially.
You sent your initial plans to DOT then? Because their last conversation, um, with the gentleman that was here was expanding the radius to the right. So a tractor trailer would pull across the lane to make the exit.
Right.
They might not have that then.
Right, and we do have our traffic engineer working and double checking the radiuses, and as soon as she's done with that, she's going to contact DOT directly to get a response from them. All right, so that's another thing that's still in process, but should be taken care of this month. And then for number twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five here, again with the traffic. For twenty-three, I did receive comment from, from our traffic engineer, but she just sent it to me today. So I will read it, I don't have the official response, we'll submit that to you probably, you know, Monday. But she did send me an email, so I'm just gonna read from this for, for that stuff. Uh, let's see. Comment twenty-three, the report shall provide some form of correspondence with New York State DOT confirming the proposed driveway configuration will be permitted. Uh, so her response to that was the stage one perm thirty-three dash COM will be submitted to New York State DOT along with this response letter and supplemental traffic evaluation. And she understands that New York State DOT will need to approve and permit the proposed site accesses.
Yeah, I mean, the other, the existing ones already long since been done.
Right.
So just the other one.
That accent, right?
Yeah.
Yup. And then twenty-four, traffic parking and access review. At the convenience store slash gas station sites, it is typical to include the fueling position, fueling positions in the parking count since some vehicles will park at the pumps to fuel only or to both fuel and utilize the convenience store. Therefore, parking stalls at the site totals thirty-three, is how she's counting it. Twelve parking spaces for the passenger vehicles up front of the store, twelve spaces at the gasoline fueling positions, six parking spaces for heavy vehicles in the rear of the site, and three spaces at the diesel fueling positions. Uh, a review of the I T E Parking Generation Manual Sixth Edition indicates an average parking demand of thirty vehicles on a weekday and twenty on a Saturday. So based on the average parking demand, uh, with gas stations and convenience market operations, she believes the proposed parking at the site is adequate to meet the, the, the demand.
No, how many of those spaces have been taken up by employees? They got some out of the way place to park, so they're not in front of the store.
Right, right, I guess that would have to be determined once the, you go through the, the building permit process and it's, I guess, staffing is scheduled for the actual site, um, yeah, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure how to answer that.
Well, right now you have no parking for staff. I mean, wouldn't that be incorporated early on, so instead of waiting until you are ready to hire, to worry about parking?
Well, I guess, I guess the approach you could take is you could designate two spots of the twelve that are in front as employee parking.
And how does that impact on your total?
Uh, that would bring us down to thirty-one, which would still be above the thirty.
You want your, your staff to be parking in front of the place?
It depends.
Yeah.
Depends on how good.
Depends what they're driving.
From out in the field.
Right.
Mostly five, and they, and they got five people.
Well, you know, picture thirty, I mean, it's not like it's stewards, I'm sorry, but.
Yeah, but it could be.
Their competition, but yeah, maybe, maybe.
It could be like stewards, I mean, twelve, you have twelve parking spots, right, then you have twelve for the gas.
Yup.
Where they're pulling up to get actual gas.
Right.
Okay, then you have six in the back.
For the large vehicles in the back.
Okay, and three diesel.
Yes.
So you really have twelve parking spaces.
Yes.
Bottom line.
For the front of the store, yes.
Yes. Staff are not gonna park in any of these other places.
Right.
So I think it's, I think it's important to note where your, your staff are gonna park. Because twelve parking spots, how does that fit in with the compliance for the size of the building and the, you mentioned the number of customers?
Right.
So how's that fit in?
One space per three hundred square feet, uh, twelve spaces. That would be one space per three hundred square feet.
Okay.
Um, so I guess we would have to. I guess I'd have to discuss that with the, with the traffic engineer. So you guys are looking for us to designate a few spots for.
Well, I think it'd be in your best interest, you don't want to fill the parking spaces out in front with your staff people.
Yeah. So perhaps designate or create a space for additional parking at some point, maybe on the side for.
You meant a zero or a block?
Yeah.
Got you.
Park a white dumpster.
Yeah.
Okay, we can, we can look into that.
You gotta tell your businessman.
Yes, I do.
Me too, though.
Okay, we can, we can look into that.
Yeah, yeah, right, that's true.
Uh, so that is twenty, her response to twenty-four, and then twenty-five, the reports show assess a vehicle site distance, reports shall contain exhibits that represent labeled site triangles conform adequate site distance to be provided, site plan should be updated to represent the same site distances. Uh, she says, we also conducted a site distance evaluation at the two driveways for passenger and heavy vehicles, and the available sight lines meet A A S H T O guidelines, I'm not sure what that stands for exactly, but, uh, but she says it does meet that and she'll update her, her information accordingly, when we get the official response from her on that. Uh, so I think that was it for the third review, and then is there anything else skip that you wanted to, to review or go through as far as?
Yeah, if we questions. Could add here, just, uh, who would, uh, my name is Skip Francis, with Great Manning Engineering, the T D E review engineer for it, and with me is Camille Varanich, that's also a reviewer with us, so, uh, either Hotkey or myself will be here in future meetings as well. But, um, together we prepared the review letters. One of the things.
One of the things that I wanted to just, man, thanks for mentioning about the upcoming information pending from your traffic consultant, that was one item I was gonna mention. The second was the size of the existing septic system. In conversations with the town, we understand that preceding individual that permitted or building code enforcement person that was, is deceased, there may be some, may or may not be any records of it available. Don't know if the applicant can obtain records from the seller of the property, that what's there, or if you need to poke around. But when you get your permits from the state or county agencies, you're gonna need to know what is in the ground and how big it is, and will it serve your capacity. So that's all that we're wanting to bring up about that. You had asked, it had been stated in the engineer's sewer report, that if the town required the existing system to be inspected, I would say, based on the town's concerns right now, that yes, you should at least look into that. So that was the second thing.
So I, I can, I can comment to that a little bit right now. So we do, we have contacted the previous owner, he has provided us drawings for the existing septic system. Um, it's.
The engineer, the engineer who should have been doing the inspection, been who designed it and everything, is gone.
Right, right, right.
So, and it's my understanding from the building department, that it was never followed through on it.
On getting permitting?
Inspected, you know.
Oh, inspected, gotcha.
You know, so basically we don't know what is or isn't in the ground.
Right.
From the town's perspective, by the way.
Right, right. Um, so we did, we did get the existing drawings, I'm, I'm gonna read from you from the updated water usage and sewage, sewage generation report that we submitted, uh, the last time. So for the septic system, we stated, our engineer stated, existing system on site designed for, was originally designed for fast food and maximum daily flow of forty-eight-hundred-and-eighty gallons per day, so it's, it's a large system. Um, we're obviously not gonna be using that, the existing system will be inspected, obviously, as needed. The, our plan is that the system to be modified for daily water use of a thousand gallons per day, instead of the, the design for forty-eight-hundred. The dose volume to be adjusted from a hundred and two gallons every thirty minutes to twenty-one gallons every thirty minutes. Estimated VOD five equals thousand gallons per day, and this is just the equation that, uh, they came, they, they used. So, so in summer, in summary, I guess, because the engineer's not here speaking about it specifically in details, the existing system we know is, is more than adequate for the, for the convenience.
Cause you don't even know that it was completed?
Oh, no, it's, it's completed and it's in.
Have you inspected it?
We have, I don't think it's, but I, I'll double check with the previous owner, I don't think it's been inspected because I don't think it's ever been used yet.
I, I, you know, my point is, I mean, the engineer died, he didn't sign it off, they don't even know whether the system was completed until you go out there and actually do some field study. I don't see that, I'm, I'm sort of not comfortable with it, I won't tell everybody.
Is that something they scope rob, like with a camera, and they, when you say there's a system, there's a pipe sticking out of the ground where they can connect to?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a system that has caps.
I don't have the paperwork in front of me, but last month it was Department of Health red flagged it. They wanted more information on it.
Right.
That you needed to provide them. So you need to get the details of what you got and, and meet with the Department of Health.
Right.
Cause they're gonna be overseeing all this.
I, I'd like to see it inside of France, but two, two, you know?
Okay, we can move on.
That, that would, you know, cause I'm really curious what the system is.
Yeah. Okay.
And if it's forty-eight-hundred gallons a day, it's, you know, quite a system.
It's a big system, yeah. Yep, okay, we can provide all that information.
Yeah.
Sure.
And, uh, the other things were, there were two correspondences, one from the Green County's Official Planning Board Decision Referral Letter, that had some comments in it. That was dated January twenty-fourth, I think there's about twelve bullet points on that. But I think your next response letter should address that correspondence.
Okay.
And that's all we would say in our next letter, just to address that letter specifically, if you want to add to it. Uh, then the fourth item was the, uh, addressed the DOH letter that this gentleman was speaking about, that was dated January thirteenth, they had some comments and concerns specifically about, I think even the well setback, uh, just asked to com- confirm it, and we did not see the well that is in question for the property shown on the plans, to like a distance to where it is, it just shows the water line going to the top of the page, but if that dimension were provided or an inset drawing to show where it is located relative to the property, that would be helpful. And those were the key things, right, at the moment. But we're prepared to, uh, issue a, and there's probably a half a dozen of very, very minor little things that we, we can clean up, we can articulate that in a letter next week after this meeting too, so that you have something to go for, before, uh, possibly we see that
Okay.
For next month's meeting. We were wondering too, what the board's, uh, position is on the secret process, if that is still open, or if that was closed. We were not present last month.
I have it right here, I wasn't sure if you'd want to do that, or anything today.
Um, you can.
I have it for you.
Huh? You're done?
Do as much as you can.
I don't have blank drawings for everybody.
Sorry, I know, I'll just read through, I'll just read, I'll just read through the part two.
The northern area.
Okay.
I've contacted Nicole at DEC, and, uh, she's, she's currently reviewing. She said she would have it, have it back to me by this week, but, uh, I'll check it with her as well. Yeah.
Remember, none of them are on site.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Say it for me, I wanna get hit in the throwaway.
Yeah.
Did I give you that extra?
Nope, nope.
Oh, okay.
This is, uh, number one.
Yeah.
Let me run through. All right, uh, impact on the land, posed action may involve construction or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site.
Probably would be yes.
Yeah, well, okay, we're gonna go through the whole thing.
Oh, God.
Posed action may involve construction on land where depth of water table is less than.
Oh, that's part two, okay.
Yeah, it's part two. Where, where the depth of water table is less than three feet.
You know, I, I would. I would think not.
Don't.
Well, you guys can answer these questions better than us, so.
Don't go ahead, don't hesitate to jump in on here, nope.
Okay, um, what was the question?
Water table, less than three feet, I don't, I. Uh, they would have, in their research for answering that question, they would have checked up for maps and, and, uh, online resources to, to, to answer the depth.
I think we did the, uh, pipe test depth, like up to seven feet, there was no water.
Yeah, no one to site, I don't see it.
Yeah.
Posed action may involve construction of slopes of greater than fifteen percent, that's pretty flat there, so.
Yeah.
Posed action may involve the excavation removal of more than a thousand tons of natural material.
No. Oh, wait, you're not doing landscaping, heavy-duty landscaping, nah, I wouldn't say.
Posed action may involve construction on land where bedrock is exposed or generally within five feet of the existing ground surface. It's all playground there. Posed action may involve destruction that continues for more than one year or in multiple phases. Probably, probably would, you would be more than a year, would you, with that project?
No.
Okay. Posed action may result in increased erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal. You'll have self-defense. Posed action is or may be located in, within the coastal erosion hazard area? Impact on geological features, proposed action may result in the modification or destruction of, or inhibit access to any unique or unusual landforms on the site. That's good, no fancy all these. Impacts on surface water, the proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies. Be dry there. Impact on groundwater, the proposed action may result in a new or additional use of groundwater or may have potential to induce contaminants to groundwater or an aquifer. Um, other than the well.
Other than, huh? There's some septic system going on in there.
Deposed action may result in new or additional use of groundwater.
Groundwater, okay.
I mean, other than the well. Um, impact on flooding, proposed action may result in development on land subject to flooding. Impact on air, the proposed action may include a state-regulated air emissions source. Impact on plants and animals, proposed action may result in loss of flora or fauna. A lot of ragweed get killed there. Impact on agricultural resources, proposed action may impact agricultural resources. No. Impact on aesthetic resources, the land use of the proposed action are obviously different from or in sharp contrast to current land use patterns between the proposed project and a scenic or aesthetic resource. In the throwaway, so beautiful.
Yeah, I know.
Impact on historic or archaeological resources, proposed action may occur in or adjacent to historic or archaeological resource. Um, impact on open space and recreation, proposed action may result in a loss of recreational opportunities or reduction of an open space resource as designated in any adopted municipal open space plan. Impact on critical environmental areas, proposed action may be located within or adjacent to a CAEA? I think so.
No.
Impact on transportation, proposed action may result in a change to existing transportation systems. Good traffic, but I don't see where it's affecting you.
Yeah, one thinks so, existing transportation, nah.
No, it's gonna.
Is there any transportation system?
Gas prices are gonna be so cheap, everybody's gonna flock there.
Yeah, that's right, I'm waiting.
Impact on energy, proposed action may cause an increase in the use of any form of energy. Nope. Impact on noise, odor, and light, proposed action may result in increase in noise, odors, or outdoor lighting. Impact on human health, the proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants. No. Consistency with community plan, proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plans. Commercial?
Yeah, consistent, yes.
Consistency with.
Is that the little negative one?
It is.
Oh, is it, okay, yes, okay, I'm sorry.
It is, I like that.
Okay.
It gets us every time.
Yes, it does. Consist, consistency with community character, proposed action is inconsistent with existing community character. Okay, uh, we'll make a.
Negative.
Motion to give us a, declare a negative declaration?
A motion to declare the, let me get the right way to say it, Chima?
Yes.
Gas station, convenience store, SEQA, negative declaration.
I'll second it.
How many seconds is it, all favor?
I.
All right, carry it. So we've got a negative, and, uh, so EA F is all set. Basically, uh, your stormwater. Skip not find a problem with that? No, it's, uh, in good shape, as far as we see it for now. Okay. Great, do we wanna, let me just.
So what do we, ninety percent, ninety-five percent, please? You ready for a public hearing?
We have no objection to you scheduling a public hearing for next month. Okay, your motion to schedule a public hearing for the next planning board meeting?
You want a motion? Okay, motion to schedule a public hearing for the Chima Gas Station Convenience Store at the
one, two, five, five, two, we're done, huh?
What's the date?
Oh, next month, April, April, November, it's early, it's early in the month, April sixth.
April sixth, planning?
Real?
No.
I was on the wrong month, April tenth, April tenth.
Please don't give us a meeting that.
That was my fault. Wrong month, wrong month.
Does anybody second it?
I'll second it.
How many seconds, all favor? All right, so we'll, uh, schedule a public hearing, you'll have to get your adjoining property owners and, uh, let them know, that, that's always gonna call you back, but, you know. Get that done next month. And you can work on all your other stuff and.
Yep.
I'll send you a list of everybody you have to send letters to.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep. Perfect, thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for coming down there.
Well, um, just a little more. Um, we probably don't have enough information yet for a resolution.
Why not?
No.
So.
Well, he's got quite a, quite a number of things. And we're gonna do the public hearing, um, and we'll see where everybody's at, you know? And before you, you know, give us your final sign off. Thank you. Though, in worst case, we could do some conditions and do things later.
Well, right, well, that's what I'm asking, do we have enough that we, that I do a resolution, or we have too many conditions? We don't wanna write a resolution with a bunch of conditions.
Well, what I'm thinking is we'll have the public hearing, then we'll have a discussion afterwards, and, uh, and see where we're at, you know?
Okay, and like I said, we're, we're gonna get all these answers to you this, before that meeting, so you'll have.
Send that last one.
Yeah, I know. I know, I know.
There will be some conditions, I mean, you.
Right, there's no way we're gonna get.
Process.
Right.
On the condition that they'll get permits with the state and county for water and septic and so forth, that those would be the types of conditions. And a DOT permit for the driveway.
Yeah, that probably wouldn't happen that quick, yeah.
All those after your initial decision, uh, to allow those other agencies to proceed with the permits that they need to chase. You'll memorialize those in your resolution.
And if you could, yes, I really like to see a copy of the septic print.
Yeah, sure.
And if, and you say you're gonna modify it, to downsize it?
It's, we're just gonna adjust it.
Adjust, okay.
Yeah, we're not, we're not adding anything to it or removing anything from it, we're just adjusting the dosage.
Is it a pump outflow on that?
Uh, I'm not exactly sure, I'd have to, I'd have to check with our engineer. But, but we will get you that information.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yes. So that's the last thing we have here on. I have, these are the deeds that were approved, and here are the maps to be, yeah.
Was that supposed to go ZBA first, or no? That was just a question to the attorney.
No.
This is just lot line adjustment.
Yeah, that was just for the attorney. So what the ZBA decided to do is when they wrote their resolution, the conditions were that the lot line adjustment was approved and that the public hearing be held with no negative comments.
Oh.
So.
And then it's gotta go back to them?
Well.
They just gotta.
This doesn't.
Okay.
But it's, it was approved on the condition that you guys approve this lot line adjustment, so.
So we could, we're gonna do this resolution until, there is gonna be a public hearing on this?
No, no.
Oh.
And we have. Not for, not for this, for the ZBA, for the variance, there's a public.
They, they did a.
They did a public.
Yes. Right, all we have to do is the lot line adjustment, and Laura did approve the deeds and.
So we're all set.
And that back to me.
You do the resolution.
Yes, and she revised the resolution that I wrote, so that's legit, it's a legit resolution this time.
If I'm gonna give you, this is the EAF, um, for that, I'm writing in your stuff.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, Randy.
Okay, all right. He's probably watching us on TV.
Yeah.
Hopefully he's having a beer right now.
We're doing it, Randy.
Whereas Randy Lent and Shelley West wishing to adjust the bounty lines of their respective adjoining parcels resulting in approximately point zero-three acres is to be conveyed from parcel bearing tax map number one-seven-point-oh-one-dash-one-dash-nine to parcel number one-seven-point-oh-one-dash-one-dash-eight located on Hadley Drive in the town blue ballpark, and as such, the party's.
And as such, the parties submitted an altered lot line application at the January ninth, two thousand twenty-five planning board meeting. Whereas required maps and deeds reflecting acres changed in accordance with chapter one fourteen of the town code were submitted at the March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five planning board meeting. Therefore, be it resolved, the planning board does hereby approve the application for a lot line adjustment in condition upon the party's execution of an agreement and deeds reflecting such adjustment and upon the recording of the deeds and maps with Green County Clerk's Office at no cost or expense to the town within sixty days of this approval.
A motion to approve the Randy Lent lot line adjustments.
You're second?
I'll second it.
Second by Frank? Hey, buddy. All the bear? All right, carry, so.
I gave you the good pen for that, if you want.
Okay, let me just move some which, so the stamper. Randy, bake dinner, some stamper knees.
Yeah, where's the champagne? I've got a color.
Okay, three, four, two, three, four. Let me set that one up separate. I'll give you one of these, you don't have one, right?
Uh, a stamp now?
Yes.
No.
Yeah, what else? We have eight minutes to approve?
Yep. You don't want to?
No.
Yes, sir. If I saw you kicking things off, can we approve them with the corrections?
Oh, no, these, oh, okay. I was taking off to make sure they covered them.
No, I just give you all these and you can just.
Yeah, I'll take care of them tomorrow.
I'll take my good pen back, too.
Oh, sorry, I forgot.
No, it's okay.
So I brought my own, because I'm a little siss.
Well, I got new, I got a whole pack of new pens for everybody. They actually work and they're not from two thousand five.
Thank you.
It's nice to finally see this in, um, print, print.
Okay.
Nice to see you.
Cause right now, it's still the old coat on.
I know, I look yesterday.
All right, so.
I'm not playing with you.
I don't know if you wanna have all of that.
Okay, we're, uh, we just had the minutes from last meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody good with, uh, doing a motion on it? Or, or do you?
I read them, I wasn't here.
Oh, okay.
They look good to me. I don't know if any of that actually happened.
All right, okay.
Okay, a motion to approve the February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five planning board minutes.
Second. Second by Josh, uh, favor? All right. Okay, this is the, um, new solar law.
So, right, there's the new solar law for everybody's code book, and then remember you want me to print out that new memo from Shady Harbor.
Yes, we just, uh, got this memo from Shady Harbor, I haven't even had a chance to look at it.
Should we, um, open the meeting?
Um, no, I'd, I'd like to discuss this, something on this, uh, solar stuff. Recent thing just happened, um, in the Baltimore solar. People evidently didn't wanna get the building permit yet. And, and I can understand that, you know, clock starts ticking, you know. But they wanted to, to comply with D E C, drop the trees, you know, because the, the bats come out the end of the month. And, uh, our, uh, code enforcement said no. This was approved under the old. Which I don't see any reason, and we, Bobby and I both took a look at that, didn't show that there's any reason why they couldn't go in there and, and take the trees down. But, uh.
But I also viewed it as any landowner who wants to cut a tree down.
Yeah.
Doesn't come here and get a permit, just to clear some land.
Yeah.
And they are the owners of the property, whether it's part of the project or not. There's a lot of land there, and they have the right to cut the trees down. I didn't see anything in our solar law stopping them doing that.
Well, now, okay, here, so there's a part in this new law, what, what page and number?
I believe it was four A is what I told you earlier. I mean, I'll have it like in front of me, but I believe.
I'll read, I'll read this. Thank you for bringing this up.
Yeah.
The requirements of this local law shall apply to all solar energy systems permitted installed or modified in towns in Baltimore after the effective date of this local law, excluding general maintenance and repair. Solar energy systems constructed or installed prior to the effective date of this local law shall not be required to meet the curriculums of this local law.
Well, that's pretty clear.
Okay, so, um, I'm wondering, is there something in this that says they can cut trees?
There is, um, I'm not exactly sure, cause it was in my emails, I didn't know you were gonna quiz me.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm sorry, no.
But there is, no, there is one that says, um, it's, it's a very, it's only one line in there somewhere, and it does say tree cutting is the actual subtext. And it says that, you'll find it, Bob will find it.
Tree cutting, removal of existence, I remember this, removal of just trees larger than twelve, I said six inches.
It's twelve inches, yeah.
It's twelve inches now, apparently.
Yes.
And there should be minimized the extent possible, in no case should removal of existences exceed fifty percent of current forested coverage.
Okay, would that.
I'll say when.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, it doesn't.
That would prevent a solar company coming here, taking the woods and just devastating it.
Yes.
Much like what you saw down on one forty-four. We still want someone buying four hundred acres and cutting four hundred acres.
Right.
Unless it was, or I think that's what, that's what my idea was, if it's fifty percent wooded, you can only take fifty percent.
I'm just trying to figure out how this, just because they haven't obtained the building permit, it's not.
So you're saying the applicability of this law, but still, it doesn't affect the, it doesn't affect their ability to cut trees. Officers, they, as long as they don't.
They stated this.
Has it been permitted yet, is the question.
It has not.
So then it's just property owners.
Right, so right now, the L S E Monteros, the new Baltimore project, has a permit from the D U C for, uh, stream and wetland disturbance. Um, but they don't have anything for the cutting of trees, and from what I've been told, I think um, a homeowner is only allowed to cut a certain amount of acres, it's either one or two a year without getting a permit from the D U C. So I don't, I didn't like read everything that was in the file.
From the D U C, the permission to cut trees?
They have permission for the water disturbance, that's the permit that I have seen. I didn't see anything in it for the trees. But in the conditions of the resolution that you guys said, it just said it has to comply with the United States fish and wildlife tree cutting stuff, I don't know, I don't have that, I don't have it filed right on.
But by doing it before the end of the month, they're complying.
They're compliant with the bats, I'm not sure about the percentage of tree clearing.
We never asked them what percentage of the land was gonna be cleared, or how much is trees.
Right.
You know, we never got a number.
Right.
From them.
We never had an actual number, but if, if, by looking at the maps, cause there is a lot of revealed yet.
Yeah, and they're gonna take a lot of the perimeter trees down.
Right.
But what does that accumulate to?
And then they also have a, a plan in place for replacing trees, about twenty-five percent of what they're taking down, it says, like they're gonna plant new saplings or whatever. So, I mean, I can send it all to you guys to show you what I have.
Does the adding of trees preclude the cutting?
Wash?
I, I don't know.
Is it?
Just the adding of trees preclude the cutting of trees?
Right.
Just because they're replaced doesn't mean that they're just because they're replacing trees doesn't mean that they're allowed to cut more trees.
Well, on the, on the, on the map that we approved, they showed a clear, had a clearing line. I'm, I'm sure of it, you know.
Clearing.
They showed the clearing area, and that was all approved, you know. Which I'm sure was over an acre, you know.
Really, the only thing this says is they can only clear fifty percent of the currently wooded acres, or, and they, they have to abide by this law? Or the old law?
Well, um.
This says they're not permitted.
Stalled or permitted.
We were instructed to proceed under the old law, well, we did that one. Not the new law.
But the new laws is what's here now, and that says it's not permitted.
Yeah.
It hasn't been permitted yet, it can't, they, they, they don't abide by this law.
They do, no, they do abide by this law. If they're not permitted.
The requirements of this local law shall apply to all solar energy systems permitted, installed, or modified. So if it isn't permitted, installed, or modified, this law does not apply to them, is how I read that.
I, I kinda agree, I mean, they, they haven't started construction.
Right.
They haven't gotten a permit. And I think, I think you're splitting hairs, to be honest with you.
I, I don't know enough about.
We proceeded with the old law to give the granting, but now, because they haven't been permitted yet, they're gonna go by this law when it's, when they are permitted.
I guess the bottom line is, what's, what's the real big deal if they went in there and just not, because what this does now, if they don't cut them, even just like, that's all they wanna do is to kind of lay on the ground before the end of the month, so they're complying with D E C. But, uh, now, as a result of them being cut off, they won't be able to do this till next winter. You know, because that's when the.
As long as they don't cut whatever we agreed on, or, as long as they only.
They can't cut anything after the end of this month, period.
By put is, but also, we gave, I, I can't remember exactly, we, they showed us the building area.
Yep.
So we approved that, so I'll see how we can stop them from cutting it down.
Well.
Well, you know.
I just want to hear not the opposite, what's the, the other side of that?
We had the guys on nine W cut more trees than they were supposed to, and we found out afterwards.
That's why we, that's why we approved this, but they showed the clearing.
Exactly, so. They don't have a permit, as a landowner only, they would have to get a permit from the, uh, building inspector, correct? Code enforcement.
Well, they didn't want to get their building permit.
Yeah.
Cause they would start to pull the trigger in the project.
But if I had wanted to cut down one, two acres of land or trees or whatever, I'd have to get a building permit, or a, a permit from the town to do that, correct?
Okay, so now how much are they cutting?
You could clear a certain amount yourself on your own property.
What is that amount?
It's either one or two acres a year.
Well, they're doing more than that.
And if you do more than that, it says, from what I've been told, you need a D E C permit to take down more than two acres of trees per year.
So we can't make a decision on this, because we don't know how much they wanna cut, so they have to provide that. Do they wanna cut what's in the plans?
The, I believe it's all part of their stormwater plan, it's clear.
Yeah, but we don't know that.
Yes, it, we approved it.
We get, okay, so why is this in front of us if we know?
Well, it is, it is in front of us, we're, we're having a discussion because of the fact that they were not allowed to go in front of us.
Right, right.
We're not, it's not front of us, we really had to play it for sale, you know. But I'm go, going forward, I'm just trying to see where, where we're, where we're going, you know?
Yeah, right.
I mean, if we're, I, I feel a little bit like the rug's pulled up already, this, we approved this.
Well, that's what I'm, I'm feeling, like, can they drop the trees or?
The only, the only recourse they have is to go to the state right now, to, to, to go against the C E O.
Yeah, but they don't have that kind of time frame.
They're not getting these trees cut down.
I know, it's for the project, your project's dead in the water till next winter.
Well, it's also gonna delay permitting process, and the town won't get the money for the permits. If you delay this, I mean, it's, it's been approved, and, I don't know, it just seems stupid.
I, I think we, I think, and, and as a whole, I think this board will have his way to try and accommodate people and make things work.
But we just don't get this action, I feel discouraged, to be honest with you.
Why did they wait till the last minute?
They, they've been trying to do this for a couple of weeks, you understand?
Weeks is not, that's last.
Well, okay. Yeah, yeah.
They did contact Jeff and reach out to Jeff about it as well.
What?
Today.
Yeah.
Um, and.
Well, that was their last resort.
Right, and I sent over the resolution, they, I think they were under the impression they had a special use permit, but what they have is their site plan application approved.
Well, you know, I don't understand how this big company can be so confused about everything all the time.
But it's out of our hands.
It's really.
Not, it's not our decision.
No, it was just, uh, it's like, right.
It's, it's like we're always coming back to this project because there's a problem.
Yeah, we already know the project hasn't even started.
I know.
You know, and.
How many years is that a bit, four?
It's kind of the idea that's really puts a kibosh on it, you know.
Well, why did they wait until the? Well, this one was twen, no, this is the new Baltimore solar, not the Hannah, I think you're thinking about the Hannah place here.
This isn't the bird.
Yeah, this isn't the bird one.
This is the hairy.
This is the one on nine W going towards.
I'm sorry, I should clarify.
Well, they haven't got their permit yet either, so I guess.
No, but they have contacted us about their permits.
They're gonna have to abide by the new codes, and it's nothing that much different.
I think they're gonna have to, right?
Anyways.
So it's, you should know better too. That's how it's done.
It puts everybody in a weird gray area with the new code and old code.
Yeah.
Oh, it's changing, my, delaying.
Okay, let's close this.
Okay.
Are we closing it before we, uh, do this, look, this letter?
Oh, I, I just had, uh.
This is just information purposes?
Well, I haven't had you have to read it, I don't know, you know, so I figured, I had, we got this, so I had to print off a copy for everybody so we could look at it and chew on it, you know, and, uh, so, that was, that was the purpose of, you know. So, we can, if you wanna look at it quick, but you know.
No, that's fine, a motion to close the planning board meeting from March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All the favor? Motion carried.
Tell the bird goodnight.
That's it.